Very good, thank you. We call the meeting order, the March meeting of the Black Mountain Town Council. Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're very pleased and appreciative to have Dick and Levon Lindsay with us to have the invocation. And Dick and Lindsay, if you would like to move around so that the camera can see you, that would be wonderful if you'd like to do that. If you'd like not to, that's okay too. I think Gary can swing around and get you there.
Let us how bow heads. Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here tonight. Thank you for your meaning and abundance of blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of help that we need to fulfill our causes, for substance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor bearing of appropriate responsibilities. Thanks as well for the freedom to embrace you. Thank you for loving us so from your boundless and gracious nature. In the scriptures, we say that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace, order, and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various level of city officials, in particular for this assembly council. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflict and injuries and the issues at our times, a sense of welfare and true leave of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and bad, the ability to work in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives enjoying their tasks. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give them assurance of working, please you, and will benefit those who live and work in around up along the city of Black Mountain. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, thank you. We appreciate you being here this evening. Thank you. I have no proclamations, awards, or recognition, and so we're on for citizen comments if we have any.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me. I'd like to add an agenda, item to tonight's agenda if possible. From last year's budget under personnel and apparatus for events, we've been providing EMT and fire for each home football game, and it's been about an average of $700 per game. That includes security and also the, let's see, officials and security and for the fire and EMT. And I would like to see if we could look at that and see if we could maybe postpone that during this year of COVID because we only have seven home games. And with ticket prices only being $7 and, you know, having a limited number of fans, it puts the school in a real bind to try to cover all of it.
Sure, sure. If it's agreeable to the board, would that go into consent agenda? Would that be fine?
Yes.
Be fine? Very good. Why don't we, I suppose we're supposed to, we need to vote on that, I suppose. So, Mr. Stone?
Ryan Stone, aye.
Art Spatilla, aye.
Tim Ryan's, aye.
Doug King, aye.
Cam King, aye.
Thank you, thank you, Tim. Any comments, citizen comments this evening, Savannah?
Yes, we have three, and I will, I'll go ahead and read those now. They're not pertaining to any, any specific business item on the agenda, so I'll just go ahead and read those on this first opportunity. This is from Ron Marcello. Affordable housing is like the old weather adage. Everyone talks about it, but nobody does anything about it. Well, unlike the weather situation, I feel like Black Mountain has a unique opportunity at this time to do something about affordable housing. Right now, there is an abandoned building within walking distance of downtown. This is the Bylow Building on NC-9. I do not know if the following is true, but I feel I need to mention it. I have heard that Ingalls bought the building and will not sell it to anyone who wants to put in another grocery store. If true, that is definitely their right, but also if it is true, then what better way to serve the community that they are headquartered in than to donate the property to Black Mountain as an affordable housing site? It would definitely benefit them threefold. One, a great tax write-off. Two, their customer base will be increased by the number of units built. And three, it would be good press. If the previous paragraph is totally wrong, this does not change the fact that the site could and should be purchased for housing since it is close to but remote from the old historic downtown buildings and is surrounded by more modern structures like the UPS building and Starbucks and a gas station. It could be a more modern structure. I picture an apartment building like the one recently erected in Suwannee. So this is an opportunity that should be pursued in a timely manner. It won't be long before someone purchases this land for some other use. Thank you for listening. This is from Teresa Fuller. Dear Mayor, City Council, and Town Manager. My name is Teresa Fuller from 207 Rodernden Avenue. Thank you for providing these three minute, this three-minute forum for me to voice my concerns. Since 2016, I presented my concerns about the conditions of Lake Tomahawk Park to the city and town manager. I invite you to review the supporting documentation accumulated. You will see a historical timeline, past newspaper articles, videos, and photographs that may be of interest to you. The files are located on our Google Drive. I have not been able to personally present to the board since the COVID-19 shutdown in March of 2020. I was hoping to attend the meeting, but my letter and documentation will have to suffice. I am asking for your attention and support in putting proper money in the budget for this beloved park. For those new to Black Mountain, Lake Tomahawk Park provides our community a place to live, or excuse me, a place to play, walk, swim, gather, commune, and relax within a 16.3-acre parcel located centrally in Black Mountain. Lake Tomahawk is fed by Tomahawk Branch, which runs through the Black Mountain Golf Course. This park was created by Civil Works Administration in the 1930s. The Lakeview Center was constructed around 1932 and semi-renovated in 1975 and 2010. Today, the center serves an aging, or an active aging center. It hosts senior walks and lunches, offers programs ranging from exercise classes to bridge, and is renovated for various private occasions, excuse me, rented for various private occasions. The park features amenities as a pavilion, fishing pier, playground, tennis courts, horseshoe pits, public restrooms, and a walking trail. The tennis courts were refurbished in 1989. The pavilion was built in 1993 and features 10 picnic tables and one small charcoal grill. Black Mountain Pool was completely renovated in 2009. We could talk for hours about really what has been done or is happening. In early 2020, Elevate Black Mountain meetings occurred. The general consensus is people want their greenways, especially Lake Tomahawk. As proof, daily and monthly loop counts were taken from an installed counter. Could some of these steps possibly be yours? Question mark. The issue is maintenance projects are overlooked, as capital projects are worked, as they are easier to get approved. This is a real problem in many communities. Before I voice my grievances, I give thanks to the city works and the town manager for work performed in 2020. The town did perform some of the work on the Lake Tomahawk Community Garden to stop erosion. More needs to be done. A large dead tree was removed for safety reasons. The sediment dam was re-engineered from the one that was destroyed in May of 2018. I ask you, please walk the park or review the supporting document with open eyes and observe what is happening to the park. Stormwater is not being controlled off the mountain and hillsides. It washes down across Tomahawk Avenue and down the Lake Tomahawk banks. Review the video on just how badly Lake Tomahawk slopes toward the lake. Review the video on just how badly Lake Tomahawk Avenue slopes towards the lake. This is, this is even becoming a danger for driving. Also, on the new builds in the past five years have removed so many trees. This seems enormous amounts of uncontrolled water. This sends enormous amounts of uncontrolled water towards the lake. How do we control our environment from being destroyed? Question mark. The current maintenance must be improved. When it rains, the trails are washed out and the gravel goes into the lake. The city puts fresh gravel on top of, top of the washed-out trail. It rains again and the city repeats. We have beaches of gravel and it's polluting, filling the lake. Our lake is rapidly disappearing. Please review the lake's 2019 depth measurement performed by friends of the Lake Tomahawk. You will see the deepest was eight feet two years ago. Have an article where this was around 22 feet at one time. In many spots, the trails have sunk approximately six inches in the past four years. People and city backhoes are using the grass areas instead of trails because they are underwater. Mowing needs to change. The grass is cut so short it dies off, what little grass we have in our park. As a result, as of this resulting in, all of this is resulting in a dying shallow lake. Observe some of the structures around the lake. The Kiwanis performed maintenance to their benches, but the other 10 benches are old-looking and a lot of them are, are in erosion areas. One by one, or one, one by the island is going to fall into the lake soon. The benches need to be removed and revitalized or replaced. We offered to work with the city to replace the wood on the benches, staying in place, and we'll replace the wood on those moved by the city to better locations. Please look at the gazebo. Did you know it was built and donated and had been used by weddings? Please take a look at it. It has graffiti of Adderouf, and the gravel from the trail is put in the entrance. I have had some donations and sales to contribute to replacing one of the beds along the trail. Will you please put money in the budget and plan for improvements? And finally, this is from Brandon Moffett, Executive Director, founder of Black Mountain Academy, located at Highway 70 at West State Street and Cragmont Road intersection. Crosswalk and sidewalk improvement requests. Reasons for concern: Traffic often passes this intersection above the posted speed limit of 35. Pedestrian safety: Pedestrians do not have clear right-of-way based on current crosswalk markings. I have observed numerous situations in which cars almost tip pedestrians, including elderly and disabled citizens. Lack of visible signage, road markings, or crosswalk signals to ensure this intersection is safe for pedestrians. Safe routes to school: We are a private school, and North Carolina law indicates that we should have safe walking access to and from our campus. Our staff and students regularly walk to Cragmont Park, Lake Tomahawk, the library, and the town. We opened in 2016, and I have been unable to make progress on this request despite persistent attempts. An injury to one of our students or staff or other community member is an avoidable tragedy. Specific requests for board consideration: Install bright pedestrian signage to raise awareness for drivers as they approach the intersection. This is a lower-cost option that would signal cars, semi-trucks, and tourists to slow down and pay closer attention. This is the first step to improving the safety of the intersection. Number two: Install a section of sidewalk on the south side of Highway 70 of the street. Sidewalks on both sides of Highway 70 meet NCDOT requirements to further improve intersection with signs, crosswalk stripes, and/or crosswalk signals. Public Works developed a bid for this in 2019, but it stalled last year due to COVID and lost tax revenue. And that'll be your, that's your comments for the night.
Thank you. So we have two reports from department heads. And first, we have Public Works, Jamie Matthews. There he is.
This TV is not working, folks. It's been a while. There it is.
Hello, Jamie. It's good to have you with us.
Nice to be here. Seems odd being here, it's been so long.
Has been, hasn't it?
So, good evening, and some of you I've not even met yet, so I'd like to say congratulations on your election and look forward to working with you moving forward. This is our Public Works Annual Operations Report for the Water Department for the year 2020. And basically, I know this is going to be a real long meeting, so I just tried to touch base on a lot of the capital projects we've done this year and then some statistics to go along with it. So, under operations, projects, and maintenance, we've replaced three water lines last year. We've done Brandon Road, Terry Estates, and Tomahawk. Brandon Road was a existing two-inch water line that we upgraded to a six-inch water line. Same for Terry Estates, and then Tomahawk was no line at all. So we put in a new six-inch line to make, for circulation, which creates more volume. And then Terry Estates and Brandon Road, there was two hydrants added, which helps for fire coverage within the town too, so, which could help with insurance ratings. So those jobs were completed in 2020. We try to do well pump replacement as they're needed, and we have budgeted for that for the past three or four years. Well 17 and Well 10 was replaced, and the reason these was replaced is because they had got struck by lightning. And so Well 17, the pump was actually replaced, and Well 10, the pipe and wire had to be replaced. So we used that money to get those back online. And then in the past, we had, for whatever reason, back years ago, when the water line was put on Montree Road, there was no valves installed to, to kill this water line. So when we had leaks at night, we were having to fight this line under pressure. So we budgeted to put in five new, what they call cut-in valves, where they have to cut these valves in under pressure, and we got that done. So now we can kill the sections of water line on Montree Road as we get leaks that occur. So that really helps staff, and it's, and it's a big safety issue also. The Asheville Pump Station was completed in 2020, and that's probably one of the biggest things for this town that has come on board in a long time because of the water availability and the amount of housing that's moving in. I know we were, we were looking and, and about, you know, the production versus what we could produce, what the demand was, and we were to our limit on what we could supply. So this has really helped. There's three pumps housed inside that. They are capable of producing 560 gallons per minute per a pump, and we are pumping approximately 400,000 gallons a day right now, which is significant. So when these pumps are maxed out at full capacity, it is capable of pumping a little over a million gallons, which I hope we never have to do because we will have to have some significant upgrades to some water lines, but, but it is possible. Refurbished well houses, we've done all these in our watershed, and we've done everything from any plumbing need, any parts need. We got rid of, we removed what they call gas chlorinators, where it injects chloride into the water system, which gas chloride is very dangerous, so we got rid of that. Now we only got one site that puts all the chemicals into the system at one spot, which makes it a whole lot safer. So we redone all those. And then Phase 1 of the Asheville takeover, we, we ended up taking that over and taking on probably, probably approximately, I'd say about 300 customers, I guess. And that runs from North Fork to Cragmont and down north to Blue Ridge Road and then up Blue Ridge Assembly. So it, it covers a pretty good section of the western end of town. Phase 3 be coming on board this year. You know, if budget's approved and everything goes good, then we can do Phase 3, which will run from US 70 up Cragmont and High Wausau. And then when it's all said and done, it'd be approximately around 600 new customers for the town. Automated meters. I know this has been worked on for a couple of years, and we have started, we've got 19 routes to do total. We're pretty close to completing two routes, which is over 300 meters, and we would have had a lot more done, but they're working on some logistical stuff with the towers, getting some power to some new towers, which is basically like a repeater around town that will help read these meters as, as it comes in. So we are working on that, and so that was a lot of the big capital projects for the year. As far as total work orders, usually do them in a three-year scale, and you can see in 18, it was 3197, and then in 2020, it's 3147. So there's really not that big a difference. And for the new members on the board, you know, a lot of this could be related from the pandemic, it could be related to weather, it could be related to a lot of different things, so, but it's pretty consistent from year to year. This is sort of a pie chart, or this is a pie chart of how these work orders are broke down, sort of gives you an idea for the year of what went on. And if, you know, something interesting, if you look at to the right-hand side on the line locates, 1,442 line locates, what that is, is anytime you do any excavation or any building or anything of that nature, you have to call in to 811 to have these utilities located. And so that sort of tells you about what kind of building or excavation or things of that nature is going on within the town. So that's, that's a pretty big number for lines to be located, but this could be for our purpose or contractor's purpose. So depends on how you want to look at it. And then it goes everything from hydrant maintenance to leak checks, and if you'll look, we had 79 leaks in 2020, which is not unusual considering leaks usually occur, they're seasonal, falling to freezing, freezing to falling, that nature, when the ground shifts is usually when these occur. It has to do with line type, line size, even where they're located, what kind of soil they're in, because you get different acidity related to different types of line and ground soil. So you always have leaks, but we combat them as they come, try to get them fixed, which, you know, a small part of it can go to your water loss, but there's a whole lot more to the water loss than just the leaks. So meter maintenance, cut-on, cutoffs, all this plays into that, but it, but it gives you an idea of how the work order system broke down to get those numbers. And then here's something that's, the last thing I wanted to mention. This is the gallons that's produced, you know, in the past three years since, since 18. In 2018, if you look, we were, we were getting 52 million gallons, thereabouts, from Asheville. And in 2020, we're getting 70 million gallons. And you'll notice what we pump from our own wells, that numbers went down from 186 million to 179. There's a lot of different factors to that. One of them being is, is one of our wells, we've actually took offline this year because of groundwater contamination from a creek, and it's actually located on the golf course. So, and what they call it is, you know, infiltration from groundwater, plus it had a bad case. Bad news is we lost a well. Good news is it was the least producing well of every one we had. So with Asheville being on board, I really, I don't even have a concern for it because what we've done, we used to be forced to run our wells to the maximum of what they could produce, which is not good because it's a strain on the system, to where now we're able to cut those back to, we're not running them near as hard, and we can use them for a good backup. If some kind of interconnection or something was to go wrong with Asheville, it's good to have the wells as a backup. So I feel more confident in having a backup for our water system than just supplying on one source. So, so that plays a factor in that too. And then Well 17, when we replaced it, whatever reason years ago, it was, it was replaced with too big a pump. So when it would pump water, it would actually pump the well dry and suck air into the system, and then people would call and say their water looked milky when all it was, was air. It was not a safety issue at all. So we done what they call a drawdown, put, put a better sized pump in it, and now it's even more, producing more. The good thing about having Asheville online is these pumps are, you could risk losing a well at any time, and it's, and it's out of the town's control. It can be, like I say, the ground shifts, the aquifers change, the amount of water could be different. I see people lose them all the time. We've actually lost several here in town over the past 25, 30 years. So we're approximately got 11 wells now, so we had 12, and like I say, the one that we went offline was, was our least producer, so, and as far as contamination and stuff, it's good to just go ahead and shut it down and, and get rid of it all together. And then we'll probably be looking at a new pump station in Phase 3 of the Asheville takeover, which we'll get into later on when we get deeper into that. But that's pretty much the gist of the big projects for 2020, and that, that don't even touch the surface of what's done on a day-to-day maintenance basis, but we could be here for a long time, and I know you guys got a lot to go through. And so that's all I have. Unless somebody's got some questions, I'd be more than glad to answer them best I can.
All right. Thank you, Jamie. We appreciate you. Anybody questions for Jamie?
Thank you, Mayor. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Jamie, I was just going to say, for the new board members, one of the things that I've been most impressed about your leadership in this department is the, the need to modernize with the SCADA system and everything. Can you explain a little bit about the SCADA system for the new members, and then also how you use it and leak, leak detection, leak prevention, things like that?
Absolutely. So, so when I first come here, going on about two decades ago, I was on the Water Department, and when we would have a leak, we, we would not know it. It'll say if it's a significant leak and we were home at nighttime, you know, we would, the only way we know it is the on-call person would get a call and say, hey, Mr. of Mississippi says out of water. Well, then the phones would start blowing up, and everybody's out of water. Before you know it, the whole half the side of town was out of water. Well, how we found out is the tank was dry. And you're, you know, depending on where it's at, it could be a 750,000 gallon tank, up to a million gallons. But then you got real issues because you're trying to get water back in, pumped back into that tank. So I remember one time I had to call a potable water truck, a tractor and trailer, to put water in the tank just to get us through to keep from calling emergency management to get bottled water shipped in. So that was a real concern, and when I had the opportunity to move up and make some of these decisions, SCADA was available. And what SCADA is, it's an automated system, and it basically monitors your whole water system from the storage tanks to the water lines to the pumps, how much you pump, how much you produce a day, and you can watch your tanks in real time either from your computer or from your telephone. So every employee has the capability that's on-call to see this. It will send you alarms at home. So now we can set a perimeter on these tanks to where if we get a significant leak and these tanks start dropping, when it hits that perimeter, it'll send us a signal, and then we can act accordingly right then. And there, it's really unlimited what you can do with this system because also if we dig up a water leak and we see that this line is an old pit cast line or AC line that we know needs to be replaced, then we can record that information in there, or we can record how many leaks we get on a certain part of the system, and then when it comes time to budget every year, I can look at that and say, okay, we've spent a lot of money on this line, or this line is this amount of age, we need to replace it. So it's a really good budgeting tool, but also it's a really good tool to fight, you know, the leaks and stuff, to keep the town from basically running out of water. So that's just a, a real fast version of what it's good for, but it's really been a lifesaver for the town as far as making sure we don't lose, lose our drinking water, you know, or the water that's available to us. But everything's in real time. You know, if you pulled it up right now, it would show you what the tank levels are, it'd show you which pumps was running. It's a really, really detailed system, and it's, it's worth its weight in gold for what we've used it for.
Great. Thank you, Jamie. Any other questions? Jamie, do you have any, this may be a Josh question too, employee, people in your department who are totally dedicated to the water system?
I have, as far as employees and their skill sets, I have some that is, it is better in the water system.
No, I mean just mean totally.
The only one we have is a contract person that runs our water system, which we have to have, it's a requirement through the state, they have to have a certain set of license to run our system. So it ain't something that we can just do, and it takes years to get those licenses and...
Right. So let me ask you then, do we, are we still 50/50 on the funding? Water, public water and streets and so forth, 50/50?
Yeah.
Is that shifting any with the new customers coming on?
It could in the future. I don't know if it is right now, but it could in the future.
Not, that's not enough to make that much a difference, really?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, so just for, for the new board members, especially as we're having our first budget meeting on Wednesday, all of Jamie's crew, except for this subcontracted person, they, they do what they need to do, and it ends up being about 50/50 of, you know, water and versus, versus the other, so...
When I came, you had a street crew and a water crew, and, and it was like you sort of draw the line right down the floor, and you know, they working water and they working street. Well, it, I figured it would be more efficient to just have one crew that done everything and they're cross-trained. So now we do, basically, we do water, streets, parks. Of course, we've got a sanitation crew now, but they're all a team. They, we, if sanitation needs help, I'll pull somebody that's better at water to help, just, we just help one another, we're a team. We just, and it makes it more efficient because it would be hard to pull somebody to water that don't know nothing about water. So anybody, anybody we hire, we try to teach them everything, and that way we're just, we're just a good, well-rounded group.
One other question, Jamie. On the, you mentioned that as we pick up the additional 300 or so, at some juncture there, we're going to need a new pump station. That's to get, that'll feed the folks up on the mountain of Black Mountain Estates, but it also helps the Montree, a lineup, is that right? Does it also help some of the new, also push water up toward Paget Town Road and...
That whole section, yeah. It'd actually help with a lot of that.
Right.
So that, that'd be something that's well-needed, and I can touch base just real quick on that. If you'll remember back years ago, our pumps and, for the Chapel Road Pump Station were too small, so we upsized them. Well, we have grown so fast that now those pump stations are, they're maxed out right now. We've already placed... We've already placed, replaced those pumps already because of how many thousands of hours they had on that they're running.
Is that the, is that probably the priority as far as the next capital expenditure wa-
I would say it's the biggest part of it, yes.
Two hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand?
Something like that, yeah, it is.
Yeah. Great, thank you. I don't have any more. We appreciate you, Jamie.
Okay.
Anybody else? Great. Thank you, Jamie. Thank you much. And now we have the, uh, Black Mountain Police Department annual report from Chief Raymond. Pleased to have you here this evening, Chief.
Appreciate the opportunity to, uh, come in front of council and talk about what the police department was able to accomplish in two thousand twenty. So again, uh, it's not, not news that, uh, two thousand twenty was an unprecedented year that I don't think many of us have, have ever, ever seen in our careers. Uh, probably one of the worst years I've ever seen for law enforcement as well. However, for us, you know, um, we saw a lot of highlights, partnerships, uh, being made, uh, community contacts that were reinforced through some of the things we've seen through the country, so, um, it wasn't, wasn't bad for us, luckily, not on what we hope it stays that way. Uh, kind of tonight, just to overview, like to talk about our call volumes, calls per officer, department restructure, um, how we compare to other agencies similar in size and, and, uh, populations, what kind of impacts we've had on drugs and narcotics in our community, our efforts in, uh, seeking outside funding through grants and partnerships to kind of help offset the budget cost, and, uh, some of our community outreach efforts. More, more importantly, uh, some of the newer ones that we've had, some, some are continued and then some are, are, of course, newer. So our calls for service, if you look, is, is kind of stabilized out. These numbers are adjusted from the ones you may have seen last year for those that participated. One of the things, as we got to looking at going to Buckham County, was we had some things like checking on duty, off duty, that was accounted in those calls, and it, a lot of times it was seven to eight thousand extra calls that it accounted for. So if you kind of bump check these numbers against previous numbers, you'll see there's, there's a difference, and, and that's the reason why. Uh, this year, we, we ran approximately twenty thousand two-hundred-and-sixteen calls. Again, it is consistent with the average. Uh, the types of calls that we ran, these only represent, you know, some of the, the larger number of calls. We, we ran, of course, uh, even with COVID, we seen a, uh, two-point-two percent growth in, in reports we took. The majority, again, fall back to the narcotics side with, uh, two-hundred-and-thirteen reports, uh, driving while impaired. We saw a decrease and, and only had sixty-one, uh, calls for that. Larceny, again, eighty-eight, slight increase. Um, some of these, these numbers, again, while they're increased in our area, were still lower than the, the, way lower than the national average. All other offenses, and again, we saw a one-point-five percent increase in, in our narcotics growth. Our violent crimes stayed kind of steady, we're, we're really low in that. The only area that we really seen an uptick was aggravated assaults. Um, again, I think some of that, if you read some of the statistics, people being confined in homes and, and things of that nature, is what kind of contributed to that uptick. Our arrests, uh, we saw a ten-point-six, uh, percent decrease over two thousand nineteen with three-hundred-and-twenty-two arrests. Again, narcotics violations led that, uh, with a sixty-eight percent growth over two thousand nineteen. Uh, warrant services, we were down seven percent with seventy-eight arrests. And then all other offenses, which are things like weapons violations, resisting public officers, um, some of the smaller type stuff arrests, we seen an uptick of about a hundred and seventy-six percent. Driving while impaired was, was down by seventeen percent at fifty-eight, and, uh, drug paraphernalia was down as well. Our citations, in two thousand nineteen, we wrote fifteen hundred and fourteen citations. Um, the number fell by about seventy percent to eight-hundred-and-ninety-one citations issued in two thousand twenty. A lot of those were the speeding citations. While it shows three-hundred-and-seventy, it was still a twenty-one percent decrease over the year before. Uh, we had, um, all other offenses, which include like your revokes, your, or your, uh, revoked registrations, faded register, fictitious registrations, weapon violations, and things like that, um, we saw at two-hundred-and-thirty-eight citations, again, still a decrease of twenty-two-point-five percent. Driving while licensed revoked was down forty-one percent, and then expired registrations, again, were down in a fifty percent decrease. One thing to keep in mind is we issued six-hundred-and-twenty-nine warning citations and a little over eleven-hundred verbal warnings, which suggests that you're twice as likely to get a warning than a citation. So when you look at the vehicle accidents, this is probably one statistic that I'm, I'm kind of proud to see is, is drastically reducing. Uh, in two thousand nineteen, we had two-hundred-and-sixty-two motor vehicle accidents. Last year, we had a hundred-and-forty-four. So if you, if you look just over last year, it's a forty-five percent decrease. However, since two thousand eighteen, we've got a little over sixty percent decrease in, in traffic accidents. And then the, the big thing to note is, uh, the unknown injuries are, are totally down. And then more importantly, the injured, the accidents with injury are, are way down as well, most of it's property damage. Talking about our, um, calls per officer, again, I kind of put some statistics in there for you to look at and see the different call volumes, but the different numbers of officers, um, that each agency has. Uh, the International Association Chiefs of Police looked at two thousand sixteen, Bureau of Justice, um, statistics study that was done that really broke down the municipalities and population size, but also in region. While it's not the best way to determine number of officers, it's a, a good indicator of, of how many officers a town should have, and, and one, our size, we're looking at, by those statistics, around twenty-five. Uh, but if you, if you look, more importantly, we're looking at, um, last year, we had a thousand and eleven calls per officer in comparison to Waynesville, um, six-hundred-and-fifty-seven, and then you can see how that list digresses all the way down. Uh, in most of these cases, we're running almost, if not more than, uh, twice as many calls per officer as, as our neighboring jurisdictions. So as we were looking last year, ways to try to put more boots on the ground and, and make sure that we have, you know, more officers on the beat, uh, working with the town manager and the council, we were able to add a position last year, which was an assistant chief's position. Prior to having that assistant chief's position, we had two lieutenants on day shift with me. We were able to move those two lieutenants to a, basically what's a split shift, which puts a senior person on each of the two rotations, uh, again, an extra person on each of those shifts. Uh, one of the things that it did help out on is there was times that some, on occasions, we would have to have Montre come in and, and, you know, set in the town till we were able to come back from arrests and things like that. Uh, we saw that pretty much dissipate last year with, with these two extra positions on the road. Our calls, uh, comparison with, with other peer agencies, this is other jurisdictions that are, again, similar in size and, uh, populations, and seventy-two percent of these categories, basically this is based off what's called the NIBR's system, the National Incident-Based Reporting System. There's fifty-two categories, and essentially seventy-two percent of those categories, we were either equal to the average of those other municipalities, or we were doing better than those, those other towns. Uh, the, the areas that we, uh, kind of fell short in was we had five reported rape cases where the average was two. Out of those, two are still under investigation, one was an arrest, and two were basically unfounded. They, they didn't occur. We had, uh, motor vehicle thefts at, at thirty-six, the average is thirty-one. While that number is above the average, it was still twenty-eight percent less than what we saw in, in two thousand nineteen. Uh, motor vehicle thefts, twenty-one. The average is fifteen, we recovered sixteen of those vehicles. Again, things that we started seeing more upticks than we typically didn't were things such as wire, uh, wire fraud and identity theft. We started seeing more of that in our jurisdictions, and as you can see, we, we had six wire frauds and eight identity, identity thefts. Again, narcotics violations, and then we saw an uptick in weapons law violations in last year as well. Drug seizures, um, I can only say, you know, hats off to my guys, we've been working really hard to try to keep the streets clean and clean enough. It's, you know, we, we hope we're making a difference, a positive difference. But, you know, time will still tell, and it's, it's still a, a work in progress. Uh, the majority of our narcotics encounters, uh, consisted of, we were dealing with methamphetamine, uh, followed by prescription drugs, heroin, and then marijuana closely followed up, but we still had instances where we were dealing with fentanyl, carfentanil, um, crack cocaine, and then steroids and things like, we were still seeing some of that. But for the most part, these are the bigger, uh, numbers that we have. We have over six pounds of marijuana seized, thirty thousand methamphetamine pills seized, fifteen thousand one-hundred-and-fifty-two-point-three grams of methamphetamine, uh, fourteen-point-nine grams of cocaine, eighty-three grams of heroin, eighty-five dosage units of LSD, and then three thousand four-hundred-and-thirty dosage units of various other opioids. Um, these narcotics had an estimated street value of about eight-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars, estimated, of course. Uh, on that as well, we were able to seize, uh, five weapons, and then six stolen weapons were removed from the streets as well during the same time period. We have built a really good partnership with Homeland Security that continues to benefit us today. Um, we have two cases last year that resulted in thirteen drug arrests, four of those were, were known gang members. Um, we seized three additional firearms, which wasn't reflected earlier, and in conjunction with that, we seized essentially a hundred-and-ninety-four-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars in cash, uh, six-point-seven-one bitcoins, which were valued at two-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars, seven-hundred-and-seven-point-zero-four-four-seven Monero coins valued at a hundred-and-nineteen-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars. And again, these are just off of the couple of Homeland Security investigations that we were able to assist on. Uh, where the, the drug epidemic is still hitting the nation pretty heavy, we were also able in two thousand twenty to assist in saving two lives with the narcotics we carry as Our cost-cutting efforts ever since coming to Black Mountain, you know, we, we've always, and I've tried to get the, the department focusing on how we can save the town money in our budgets. Uh, and this past year, in two thousand twenty alone, and, and we've been really successful, I think, so far, but in two thousand twenty alone, we, we had approximately a hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand-five-hundred dollars that we were able to save, um, the taxpayers. Um, part of that came from, we applied for a grant in two thousand nineteen, it was delayed and being put out, um, that was valued at twenty-four-thousand-five-hundred dollars, and, and that resolved in some MDTs, uh, in-car printers, uh, printer mats for the cars, and then also a seventy-five inch smart TV that we can use to log into and, and use our computers to do teaching and things of that nature, uh, from it as well. In two thousand twenty, twenty-one, uh, grants process, it came out shortly after, we won the grant for twenty-two-thousand-five-hundred dollars, which, again, two large workstations, two new desktop computers for the officers to use, um, la- or another smart TV for the squad room, and then also, uh, some of the patrol rifles for, uh, officers who in the past have been using their own rifles, so this will give them an opportunity to have, you know, a department-issued weapon. Uh, through, again, through the partnership with Homeland Security, uh, we were able to save the town through, uh, the purchase of a license plate reader, and then overtime, approximately eleven thousand nine-hundred dollars that came back into the town. Over the past two years, it's somewhere around fifteen thousand seven-hundred-and-twenty dollars in overtime cost and ninety-six-hundred-and-eighty dollars for equipment. Uh, through the Governor's Highway Safety Program, uh, we're very active in that. We were able to purchase, uh, four radar units, five ALCA sensors, and one in-car video camera, uh, that would have totaled approximately a thirteen-thousand-dollar savings for the town as well. In twenty, late two thousand seventeen, December of seventeen, uh, we had a huge narcotics bust that resulted in a, a substantial amount of money. Again, for it to be adjudicated, it took several years, and we finally in two thousand twenty got a little over a hundred thousand dollars from the seized money. Again, with the, um, the way our fleet is, is and, and aging and, and the fleet, we were able to take eighty-eight thousand dollars of that and purchase two new Dodge Durango's to assist as well. Uh, another thing that we did was, after the tragic death of, of George Floyd, you know, the civil unrest that, that came amongst Buckham County, we were asked by, of course, Asheville to help out, because nobody was, you know, expecting the, the large numbers that turned out, and, and we realized that we were under-equipped. And, and part of that was the fact that we didn't have any kind of padded riot gear or anything like that, but we, we nonetheless, we helped. Uh, working with the town manager, we were able to use some, uh, drug asset forfeiture funds and, and different, uh, law enforcement restricted funds to purchase about sixty-eight-hundred dollars worth of, of riot gear, which outfitted ten, ten staff members. And through the U.S. Department of Justice and North Carolina Leaking Municipalities, uh, yearly, we replace anywhere between three to four ballistic vests as they age out. Those vests run about nine hundred dollars. Um, it, after the reimbursement from these two entities, it ends up costing the town about somewhere between a hundred and sixty and a hundred and eighty bucks per vest. Our community outreach is really, really funded, uh, through Sourwood and the sale of T-shirts and raffle items that's donated to us, uh, where we can assist, you know, the elderly and needy families during Thanksgiving and the Christmas holidays. Uh, this year with COVID and, you know, the strain that was put on businesses and, and even, you know, our citizens, uh, we just simply were not gonna try to do any kind of fundraisers when, when Sourwood was canceled. In May, we had a business owner come up, and, and that's when things were really, nationwide was really bad for law enforcement. They said, hey, we appreciate what you guys are doing, we would like to provide meal for you and, and, uh, or for your officers and their significant others. And of course, we, we were glad to have that support. Uh, they had such a, a great turnout, they, they raised an additional little over four thousand dollars, which they donated into that Christmas fund. Uh, the police officers, again, trying to keep from shaving and wanting to grow beards through the, the wintertime, uh, we have a no-shave November, December, January, it's a hundred and fifty dollars to participate, and we raised an additional, uh, about fifteen-hundred additional dollars, uh, that went into this fund. So with the help of Deputy Chief John Wilson of the Fire Department, we were able to provide ten meals, uh, to needy families at Thanksgiving. And then during the Christmas holidays, we worked in conjunction with the Swallow Valley Christian Ministries and provided a, a very Merry Christmas to fourteen children here in, in Black Mountain. And, and when we talk about what we provide, you know, it's not just the toys, they, we, we go out and we buy the necessities, the clothes, the coats, the shoes, the things that, that they really need as well, along with the toys. Uh, we started to, we talked about this the year before last, it kind of slowed down a little bit. COVID nineteen really put a hindrance on it, but we were finally able to jumpstart our, um, Black Mountain Police Department Cadet Corps. And basically what this program does is, is we bring kids in and, and talk with them, show them what we do, but more importantly, it's more of a mentor program for the youth, where we work with them to show them the importance of, uh, being good students in school, along with being good members of, of the community. We, we've got a core base, and, and now with, uh, COVID restrictions, hopefully starting to lift, we can start growing this program a little more. Uh, it's led by our two lieutenants, Joe Kidd and, and Chris Dayton, who are doing a wonderful job with this, and we, we're just waiting for the COVID to lift so we can, can grow this group of, of kids. Uh, we've always looked for ways to include the community in our department. One of the things we've done more, more so in the past year than, than in years past, I think, is we've really tried to include the citizens in our interview processes and our promotional processes. And once the George Floyd incident occurred, you know, we still, we, we're constantly looking for ways to, you know, work with our community, pull our community in, and there was a lot of tough questions going around nationwide, and, and not just locally, but nationwide. Um, and we felt like that we needed to address those locally, because if you don't, then, then people tend sometimes to see what's going on elsewhere and not pay attention to what's going on locally, and, and it could be hard on us. So we started pulling in, um, meeting the, the governor's restrictions, of course, uh, people within communities that, that we felt had a say, that, that those folks would listen to them, and, and we started a community stakeholders group. I'm hoping, again, this year, this is a group that I think that, in, in a program, I think we really have to focus on growing, and again, it's where we come together, and we tackle the hard issues, we talk about the things that nobody really wants to talk about, and we get the information out that, of, of how the police department's operating, and if we don't have the answers, a group we work together to come up with successful solutions that we can take back to the community to show that, that, that we're working as a cohesive unit to, to make this community much, much better. So with that being said, that's kind of all I had, you know. The only thing I'll say is the great partnership and support we have with the citizens of this community has allowed us to really, uh, continue on with, with our, uh, community events and things that, that take in parent, and really this shows... really, this shows how much of a loving community we have here in Black Mountain and that, you know, we're here to help. So I'm finished. I'll take any questions if anybody has any.
Anyone have any questions for Sean?
I do. First, I wanted to mention how impressed I was with you and the district attorney and what you all brought together, a task force, I believe it was, around procedures for the, you can tell it better than I can, but tell maybe the group would like to hear what you did in that regard.
So there's always been, it's basically called a Brady-Gieg Leo Act, and it's been around since, part of it's been the '60s, the other part's been the '70s, and it's kind of an underlying, so if a police officer does something that they shouldn't be doing, if they've lied in an investigation, if they've done things that are unethical, it's got to be reported, and it's got to be reported in the district attorney's office if they are found, what we call Brady-Gieg Leo. Here in Buncombe County, it's one of two things. They either find that, well, one of three things. They find that, no, it doesn't meet Brady-Gieg Leo. Secondly, if it does, it meets Brady-Gieg Leo, but the DA will let them continue to testify. Or if it's that third degree, they meet Brady-Gieg Leo and they can't testify any longer, which means they essentially lose their certification. What we did was we kind of came together and we put those into guidelines, which is really a quick reference that department heads and law enforcement heads can look at as a guideline to see, you know, what meets the criteria and at what point we forward that to the district attorney's office for investigation.
Well, thanks for explaining that. I got the impression that you were kind of a leader in that process, so.
In ways, I was, only because I like to see things really streamlined. It takes the guesswork out. But more importantly, you know, I think it's very important for law enforcement and the district attorney's office to work together for that trust of the community and to show the community that we have nothing to hide, that we're going to hold ourselves accountable. You know, sometimes the hardest thing to do is police ourselves, but we're more than willing to do that. And by doing this, I think it, you know, sent the message that we will hold our people accountable if they step out of line. And that's why I thought it was so important.
Well, thank you. And along with questions, I was just referring back to this, the pair of the communities, the neighboring communities and the calls pursuant officer. Have you figured out, I bet you have, the salary comparisons with these communities?
I have, but again, I don't have that with me. I can tell you that one of the things that kind of hurt us for a long time was when you're setting against Buncombe County and APD who are paying much higher salaries. Regardless of the work environment being better, you know, money tends to talk. And so we did lose a lot of very good applicants to the larger agencies. Therefore, a short spell, Asheville was having some issues, and we were very, very fortunate to get some really experienced officers to come our way. Now we're kind of at that turn again where it's going back in the other direction. For example, we have two positions open right now. We've had several applicants, but quite honestly, you know, we're still reviewing those applications because we want to make sure whoever comes here fits not only the department, but fits our town as well. And so it's really difficult sometimes to fill those positions.
And my last question, on all those narcotics arrests, in general, are they local folks or are they just people passing through?
In overall arrests, not just narcotics, but overall arrests, less than 30% are what's considered local. We kind of base that off of their addresses at arrest. So less than 30% are local. And narcotics, we're looking at much less than that. Most of it we're catching in traffic stops of people coming from either McDowell-Berk County area going west or vice versa, coming from the west and headed east. So we're kind of catching them coming through. I don't have the exact statistics, but I will tell you that a large, large number of people outside of our area.
Okay, good to know. Thank you.
Anyone else? Chief Freeman is going to be presenting Atlanta Sky Regional Council this month. I think it's going to be this month. If not, it'll be soon. But it is supposed to be this month. And briefly, it is your work and leadership, and we will listen to him when he presents Atlanta Sky. Maybe we can have him back. But it's worth the public knowing, the leadership that Chief Freeman has had with the, it's a statewide effort with the attorney, the North Carolina Attorney General, and the name of the task force is...
Yeah, it's the Governor's Task Force on Racial Equity and Law Enforcement Justice, something like that.
Yeah. Sean served on that and taken a leadership role, and it's had some impact on just what he does here in our community as well. But we appreciate your leadership and stepping up to the plate in what's been a very difficult era. I understand. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, Josh, let's go to the consent agenda.
All right. Consent agenda. Your first item, 5A, will be adoption of minutes. This would be the February 4, 2021 Agenda Workshop Minutes, the February 8, 2021 Regular Session Minutes, the February 8, 2021 Closed Session Minutes, and the February 25, 2021 Special Call Minutes. Item 5B is a memorandum of understanding, or MOU, with Buncombe County concerning vaccination sites. Attorney Snee has looked over this MOU. We, what it really boils down to is the county has got some language in here. Really, if other jurisdictions or other fire departments in the county would like to help at these vaccination sites, we just want to make sure these folks get paid, what they should be getting paid. So that's really what this boils down to, is for staffing at the COVID vaccination sites and getting those folks paid. 5C is a call for public hearing to close a portion of unopened, platted portion of right-of-way parallel in between West College Street and Goldmont Street. This is something that has been on your agenda before. A few months ago, it went through Planning Board. The actual property owner had petitioned to close a portion of this alley. And I think it's been the practice, at least for the past little while of this board, to look more holistically at closing the entire portion of an alley versus piecemealing it. So that was voted down a few months ago. This has been back to the Planning Board. The Planning Board is now requesting that the entire right-of-way or unopened portion be closed. So that'll be coming to you for public hearing on May the 10th. Item 5D is an approval of an agreement for Anna Major for a Girl Scout Gold Award project on the Oaks Trail. She is requesting from the board that she be allowed to paint some interactive drawings and things of that nature on the Greenway to encourage kids to get active and be involved in exercise. Item 5E is a call for public hearing for consideration of your charter update. Now we've spoke about this a handful of times. This would be for public hearing on the April 12 meeting. And lastly, the item that you added, 5F, would be, I'm not sure, I'm going to call this, suspension of fees for public school football games during COVID times.
And so, for my benefit, tell me exactly what that's going to do?
So what this would do is would suspend those fees that we have in our fee schedule to charge for our firemen to be present at the football games.
Very good. Thank you. Which is, just to remind everybody that, I think you already know this, but that's been a present at the high school football games for forever. I don't know when it started, but it was that way 50 years ago. It's been a long time. Thank you for bringing that to our attention, Tim.
And that will be your consent agenda.
Right. Thank you. Any comments, questions on any of that, anything on the consent agenda? If not, I'd entertain a motion for accepting the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to present her to accept the consent agenda as amended.
Very good. Thank you. Let's do the roll call.
Ryan Stone, aye.
Artz-Patola, aye.
Tim Lyons, aye.
Doug Hay, aye.
Pam King, aye.
Thank you. All right. Citizen comments, any?
No, no more.
Thank you. Unfinished business, a little Greenway update, Josh?
Real quick on this. I don't have a lot to update with you on this. We have been working hand-in-hand with DOT. We've had a couple meetings with DOT to talk about this potential new alignment. We've also, the engineer, our engineer of record on this project has also been involved in those meetings. He is now working on reaching out to the railroad. This will be probably one of the larger hurdles that we will face on this. So I don't have any info for you on that one. I'm hopeful that maybe at our next meeting in April, we can have some sort of correspondence back from the railroad to give you an update on that.
Josh, I know that you sent over information to us, but I don't think the public has heard about new possibilities since our last meeting. Is that right? If they would use the railroad, use that?
Yeah, well, maybe we haven't talked about that in public. I can't recall. So what we were doing, you know, just going back a little bit, you know, we've tried to go our original plan route, which has been hugging the river, and we ran into some issues along that river where we found a rise. There was an engineering study, and there was a rise in water levels, and you cannot have a rise that, when you're using federal money. In this specific area, there was a rise, I think, to three properties. So there was an alternate route that was mentioned, I think maybe after the meeting. And we are now looking more at that route. And I think that's kind of what I'm referring to in this update, is we've talked to DOT about the potential for, you know, what that looks like logistically if we start changing routes on our funding. I don't know that that's that big of an issue according to them. I think the biggest hurdle we'll be getting, we'll be getting the railroad's blessing on that unprotected crossing on Hippel Road.
And that new route would eliminate the need for, potentially eliminate the need for some of the road sidewalk sections?
If the new route is successful, it would alleviate the need from going directly through town. That's correct.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
And that's all I've got for 7A.
I have a question, though, really back to the consent agenda item related to the Greenways, since we're talking about Greenways. Did Miss Anna Major, did she move that, move her project and request and so forth through the Greenway Commission?
We did not go through the Greenway Commission on this one, simply because it was not dealing with any kind of extensions or things of that nature with the Greenway itself. It was just dealing with, I guess if you want to say improvements or painting actually on the asphalt. So it did not go through the Greenway Commission.
Okay. All right. Any questions on, anything else for Josh on that, on the Greenways? All right, we have the presentation of the 2019-2020 audit by Malden and Jenkins.
Mr. Tim Lyons is here with Malden Jenkins. He will lead us through our audit.
Appreciate y'all having me here tonight. I'm just planning on going, reading every page of this to y'all, take three hours, be light, what I've got, what I've got here instead of spending a ton of time in the actual comprehensive annual financial report document itself, is I've prepared a PowerPoint presentation. I know y'all have had a very full meeting tonight and have a pretty robust agenda. And so I'll move through this quickly and just try to hit some of the high points and communicate some of the things that I feel like are relevant and need to be communicated to the town. So to that extent, a short agenda, introduce the engagement team who work on the job, go over the results of the audit, some financial trends, some comments, recommendations, and other items. And then, of course, questions at the end. But certainly, as I'm going through, if there's anything that you need to stop me, feel free to do so as we go through. So just a quick reminder about who we are as a firm. Malden and Jenkins, our office, our Columbia office, which is where I'm based out of, handled this audit the last couple of years. It's been handled by your Atlanta, our Atlanta office. But with our Columbia office coming online two years ago, we've now got a significant amount of our governmental resources that are based in Columbia, South Carolina, including myself. I was in Atlanta for nine years and moved to Columbia in 2018. And so, but just to make sure we have continuity on the job, and we still have the folks who are looking at this, if you'll notice, that third bullet point is James Benz, who was the engagement partner for the last couple of years, who served as the engagement quality control reviewer this year. And basically, every one of our audits, when we get done, myself and Kyle, who was my senior associate who ran the job, when he and I get finished, we send, we sent the file and the finished report itself to James, who was not otherwise associated with the job, who did a completely independent review to make sure that we did what we needed to do. And in that way, we feel like we really can serve our clients well. We can rotate the eyes who are on the job. We can make sure that the partners, it's not just one partner making decisions, that we have multiple partners looking at these things. And it's been very successful for us in our governmental practice. And so just want to take a second to kind of reintroduce the firm and introduce myself to you all. This is my first year working with the town. This slide right here, the results of the audit. The main takeaway is here is that when we do the town's audit, we issue two reports. We issue our report on the financial statements, which is that second bullet point, and then we issue our third report, which is our report on internal controls of our financial reporting and on compliance in accordance with government auditing standards. Our report on the financial statements, we issued an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion on the financial statements. There's no higher opinion you can get. That's basically just says that, look, the numbers you see in here are considered to present fairly in all material respects, the financial position, the results of operations, and the cash flows of the town as of June 30, 2020, and for the fiscal year that ended. In our internal control report, our government auditing standard report, we did have one audit finding, as it would be called, a material weakness in the town's internal controls. And that is sort of summarized right here. Basically, this is a tough one. This is a tough one for me to have to write because it's just a kind of a function of the fact that the town is small and has a small staff. Sometimes it's really hard to achieve perfect segregation of duties. And because of that, because we have, when you have overlapping duties, when you have folks who can perform sort of certain parts of a transaction where it overlaps, it creates potential issues in internal controls. And so we do, in our management points, we have a couple of things that I think if we can get those things implemented, we can potentially overcome having this finding in the report. And so we've been, Josh and I have been talking, certainly talking about ways that we can address this and have it not be a finding anymore in this year's, in this upcoming year's audit report. The next couple of slides are what are called required communications. I'm not going to read every single one of these to you all. These are what the audit standards tell us that we have to submit to the board. We have to do so in writing, and I've kind of done so with these slides. But there are a couple of these that I think are important, and I do like to make sure I hit the highlights when I present the audits. The two bullet points on this slide, basically what we're talking about here is that embedded in your financial statements are accounting policies, management's judgments, estimates, things like the actuarial assumptions that go into valuing the net pension liability and allowance for doubtful accounts and those types of things. And as a part of our audit, we review the town's accounting policies. We review the judgments and the estimates that go into producing these financial statements. And basically, I think it's important for you all to know that there are not any that are used by the town that are non-standard or will be considered aggressive. There's no positions the town has taken that there's not authoritative accounting guidance for. I think that's always important for the board to know that there's, that none of those type things exist. The policies that are used, the judgments and the estimates are very comparable, consistent with what we see at other municipalities in the state of North Carolina. I think it's important here to point out that second bullet point, our relationship with management. We did receive full cooperation from the town's management and staff. We had no disagreements with management about accounting issues or financial reporting matters. For audit adjustments, we did post some adjustments to the trial balances that we received from the town, but all of those adjustments were posted. We didn't have any past audit adjustments. Sometimes when we go through an audit, we can identify a difference, but we can sort of agree it's immaterial and not post it. We didn't have any of those. So everything that we identified in our audit, or that we felt like in working with the town, hey, we probably need to get this posted, need to get this number reflected, those are all been posted. There were no past adjustments as a part of the audit this year. And then lastly, I think it's always important for you all, as the governing body, to know that last bullet point. We have to be independent of the town. The financial statements are the responsibility of the town's management. We were engaged to audit them in order to, in order to do so, we have to be independent. We have to meet the standards, and we do meet the standards that are both promulgated by the AICPA, which kind of set our professional ethical framework, but also in accordance with government auditing standards, which are even more stringent than just our professional ethics requirements. So we are independent of the town. A couple of slides here, just to go over. The first two here I have are about the town's general fund. You'll notice this year, there was a big kind of spike in revenues and other financing sources, one of those being pretty significant proceeds from the sale of some property. It was about $560,000. So if you kind of take that out, the blue line sort of kind of continues on the same sort of trend it's been on. Expenditures were largely flat from 2019 to 2020. There was a little bit of an increase there. And what this four-year trend ultimately sort of leads to is this, and this is probably, you know, fund balance is the important thing we all want to talk about. fun balance is the important thing we all want to talk about. We want to know how's the general fund doing at the end of the year. And as you can see for 2020, we had our overall fund balance, which includes all of the different components, was about 63% of annual expenditures. More importantly though, 39% in unassigned fund balance. When you look at the, the composition of fund balance, that green chunk there that's unassigned, which means that's available for spending at the town's discretion, makes up about 39% of your annual expenditures. And that's, you know, that's, 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 that's well above what the GFOA or any other trade organizations would typically recommend you have kind of at a minimum. And so, you know, being in that position, you know, I know things have sort of trended to be not nearly as bad as we kind of initially thought they were going to be with COVID and the pandemic. But certainly it helps to be in a general fund position like that, to be able to withstand any sort of shocks in the economy and delays in revenues and, and those types of things. So, and then just, you know, that, that, that red chunk there, that's your restricted fund balance. The largest two components there being the restricted for state stabilization. That's the calculation that the LGC requires us to do that basically marks this restricted, the fund balance that can't be appropriated. And then the other piece is the Powell bill. That's about, the restricted for state stabilization is about $900,000. And the other piece is the Powell bill, which is about $365,000. Those are the two biggest components of your restricted fund balance in the general fund. And those obviously have to be used for those restricted purposes. The next two slides, look real quickly at the town's two major proprietary funds, the water fund and the golf fund. The water fund's performance, as you can see, has been pretty consistent with revenues outpacing expenses, even with kind of a steady increase in depreciation expenses. The town completes projects and brings new capital assets online and then begins depreciating, depreciating those over their useful lives. Kind of similarly with the golf course fund though, we see a kind of a continued revenue, short revenues being less than expenses. You know, revenues did tick up a little bit this year, expenses staying relatively the same. But I think when you look at this slide in conjunction with this slide, you know, the water fund, we showed an overall decrease in cash this year, but a big chunk of it was that transfers to other funds. So the general fund, that's $618,000, includes a transfer to the general fund to reimburse the general fund for some administrative costs that the general fund pays throughout the year, that the water fund kind of pays their piece. But then also a big transfer to one of the capital projects funds, the automated meter reading project fund. So, you know, having a $115,000 decrease in cash, when a big chunk of that went to the town's other funds, you know, strong cash flows from operations there, $529,000. And then you can see the water fund still reports unrestricted net position or unrestricted equity at the end of the year. The golf fund is not, not quite the same. You know, I think there, there probably does need to be a little bit of focus there on what, what necessarily we're going to do with that. There's kind of some negative trends standing out with, while we do have positive cash flows from operations, the golf fund at the end of the year actually didn't have a cash position. They had a deficit in the, in the town's cash pool, which we had to reclass to a liability. And when you look at the end of the year, essentially the golf fund didn't really have much in the ways of current assets beyond a little bit of receivables and no cash to really speak of. And when you, when you look at the, the golf fund, there's a liability for unearned membership revenue. So essentially that money that's been paid upfront for memberships, we haven't even gotten to the end of those. We've, we've already sort of dipped into that cash for other parts of the golf course fund operation. So need to take a look and kind of see it, what the, what the long-term plan there is with the golf course fund. So the next couple of slides are what are referred to as recommendations in our management letter. These are items that we just like to point out. I think this, you know, th- these two things, I think if we can do these things and, and a couple of other, like I said, that Josh and I have discussed, I think we can try to address some of the segregation of duties issues. The first thing has to do with the purchasing manual. Basically, the purchasing manual does not specifically address related party purchases, which would be purchases from employees or involving employees or governing members or what have you. So we need to amend that and make sure we address that specifically and how those are to be handled or expressly prohibited, however that needs to be done. The vendor master file, this is an important, what are known as kind of a, is a compensating control. When we have segregation of duties issues and a lot of times with a small, small government, a small finance function, reviewing the vendor master file by somebody who is knowledgeable of the town's vendors, but is not involved with the actual processing of invoices and dispersing of checks. Reviewing that master file can be helpful because if, if you've got somebody that doesn't have the ability to approve, you know, approve checks or sign checks or, or set up vendors, they can at least be involved in reviewing the list to make sure that, you know, who, what vendors were added, what vendors were removed, just to see if, you know, there have been, wait a minute, I, I don't recognize that name at all. That's kind of strange. So things like that, those compensating controls, I think are what is going to be needed to kind of help address the segregation of duties finding related to the town's, the government auditing standard report. This recommendation in here, and this is, this is something we've been putting in pretty much every single management letter for every audit we've been doing. It's more of an industry recommendation than it is anything else. We just want to keep information technology and cybersecurity on the forefront of all of our governmental clients' minds. I think for a long time, we were all sort of able to sort of blissfully say like, look, this is happening to big governments. This is not happening to us. But unfortunately, it's kind of happening to governments of all shapes and sizes now, that cybersecurity, ransomware attacks, hacking in, taking control of files and what have you. And so we're just want to make sure that that is at least a part of, at least on, on the radar of everybody, just that we're paying attention. We're thinking and we're evaluating this as best we can. I mean, I know it's, it can be a, a tough thing and it's not something that everybody has a ton of resources to address all the time. But we just want to make sure that this is at least on the forefront, that we're communicating this. We feel like as the town's external auditors, we feel like it's our responsibility just to make sure that they're aware of the risks that are out there that we're seeing at other governments that, that we're serving and that just other general industry risks that we're seeing in the marketplace. And then lastly, while I would love to sit here and talk to you all for hours about new accounting standards, I know that's not what you guys want to do tonight. And so I'll just say that we, the GAZB has issued a few announcements that will be effective in the town's financial statements, specifically GAZB statement 84 next year. We'll make sure the town is ready to go with implementing that. Nothing to do on the internal side. It's just going to impact how one of the town's funds is presented in the financial statements potentially. A cou- a couple of other standards involving leases and IT arrangements, which will be effective in the coming years. And, you know, we'll make sure the town is, is ready for those as well. And then lastly, just to be aware of, there's been a lot of federal action, as I'm sure you all are very aware. The CARES Act passed in the spring, the Consolidated Appropriations Act at the end of last year. There is a lot of federal money out there right now flowing through the state more often than not. But if the town is the recipient of any of that funding, just to make sure that you're looking at the FAQs that have been issued by the federal departments, looking at the guidance that the, the state is putting out there. There's a lot of significant reporting requirements. The Federal Funding and Transparency Act, FFAT, that, that was one that, that was here for a long time and then, and then went away a couple of years ago, but has now been brought back in force with a lot of this COVID money. And so we just want to make sure the town is paying attention to that. And if they are the recipient of any of that money, that they're aware of those requirements and doesn't get tripped up and, you know, make some grand tour, whether it be the state or somebody else unhappy because they're not fulfilling their reporting requirements. So making sure that you're, you know, just aware of those and asking about those if the town does see any of those new federal funding streams come in its way. And then lastly, as a reminder, we do free, we free quarterly continuing education for our governmental clients. We've been doing this all remotely now for the last almost 12 months. That's hard to believe, but we've been doing it that way. And so certainly if, if any of y'all have taken advantage of that, thank you and we love doing that. But if anybody is interested in being on those, you know, Josh has my contact information. We can always make sure that we get you added to the email list that we have, that we, that we send those out. And so with that, I will, I will stop and certainly entertain any questions that anybody might have.
Any questions, board? Very good. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you all for having me.
Thank you, Tim.
And we do need, the board, we do need to approve this. And so I'd entertain a motion to approve the 219-220 audit as presented.
So moved.
All right, we'll call Mr. Stone.
Ryan Stone, aye.
Archibald Tuller, aye.
Tim Marans, aye.
Okay, aye.
Pam King, aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We appreciate you being here this evening.
Thank you all. Good night.
Thank you.
You too. Josh Refinancing 304 Black Mountain Avenue.
All right, so this, I talked to you a little bit about this on Thursday night. I've got two, kind of two options here. One is a 12-year loan, one is a, excuse me. One is a 12-year refinance, the other is 11-year refinance. If you go with the 11-year, it's going to be a little bit cheaper. You're going to save about $11,000 total. Your interest rate also is a little bit better, 2.03 on the 11-year versus 2.13 on the 12-year. As far as a starting out payment a year, it's about, for the, for the 11-year, 70, almost 78,000. And for the 12-year, about 73 and a half. Now, this, this is, you know, if the board decides they want to go through with this, this is going to reduce that debt that we currently have on 304 Black Mountain, Black Mountain Avenue. We pay that debt half from the general fund, half from the water fund, but that is going to cut that debt essentially in half. So right now it's about $150 roughly a year, excuse me, $150,000 a year. And it'll go to about, you know, 70, 78, so.
So Josh, that's applying the remaining portion of, of the proceeds of the sale of the old Public Works Building.
That, that will be correct. This will be applying $500,000.
That's the critical, really the critical point.
$500,000 to this.
Right.
So we would end up having refinancing $700,000 instead of 1.3 million that we currently are at. I know if you're doing the math in your head, it doesn't add up, but we made a payment. Our payment was due, so we went ahead and made that payment, I think last month.
Okay. Any questions for Josh on that? If not, I'm, I might make a recommendation to the board to entertain a motion for the 11-year finance at 2.03. Does this sound reasonable? I'd entertain a motion to that extent.
And just, we're at 3.49 now.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd, I'd make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. I appreciate that. If you would start the roll call.
Ryan Stone, aye.
Archibald Tuller, aye.
Tim Marans, aye.
Doug Hay, aye.
Pam King, aye.
That's a little distracting. Wonder what that was. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. The DWQ grant for the Swanon Ola River Restoration Project, Josh.
So this is a, we, we've been waiting on this agreement for quite some time. I'm so glad that we finally got it. I'm sure the state's been busy with other things, but a, a couple of years ago, maybe it was just a year ago, we received some funding through Duke Energy. Very thankful for that funding. It was $50,000 to go towards this project. I think we also got some Pigeon River funding, which is a community foundation grant that we've gotten in the past for some other projects. And then with this funding from Division of Water Quality, we'll be able to do this project, which is around $200,000 for essentially no cost to the town. There will, will be some in-kind work. We'll, we'll, we will help with a few things. But as far as us, you know, sending a check to someone, we won't have to do that. This will restore about, I want to say 1,500 linear foot of the Swanon Ola River as it runs through Veterans Park. If you've been out there over the past couple of years, you've noticed that the banks continue to erode away, which is compromising, really compromising Veterans Park, disc golf course. And I guess eventually some of those trails, if it continues on. But this is, um, this is money that we've gotten before from Division of Water Quality for some other grants. And I think it would be a good project for us to move forward with.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for Josh on that?
Josh, can you explain a little bit what that restoration would look like?
So if you, if you look in your handouts there, similar, if you've been on the golf course, Tomahawk Branch, very similar to that, but a much larger river, of course. Tomahawk Branch is small, but laying the banks back, planting some, you know, some stabilizing types of shrubbery and trees. And, and of course, we are going to, Montrie is actually a, a part of this as well. They've agreed to help in any way they can. So on the opposite side of the river, on Montrie's property, that, that will be affected too in the, the restoration of that river. But similar to what the golf course looks like, just on a larger scale.
Will it alter the, the current path there, there?
It should not. No.
Any other questions for Josh? If not, I'd entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to motion that we approve the grant agreement as presented.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Stone.
Ryan Stone, aye.
Archibald Tuller, aye.
Tim Marans, aye.
Doug Hay, aye.
Pam King, aye.
Thank you. Josh, the NCDOT maintenance agreement.
AD is a maintenance agreement. This is for our existing pedestrian underpass under Interstate 40 that connects both Veterans Park and the Community Garden. This is not something, I think we've used it forever. I don't know. It's just something that DOT was never aware of. And now that they are, we need to get this maintenance agreement in place. So, you know, anything that needs to be maintained in there, of course, will be our responsibility. We'll have to keep that, that, the, the barrel, if you will, the culvert that the greenway passes through now. We'll have to always keep that clean, of course. We've got, we've got to do a little work on the entrance and exit to that for some ADA compliance. And then moving forward, if it's, you know, if it's graffiti or anything like that, we'll be responsible for maintaining that. And if we want to add lights or something down the road, we can do that, but we'll have to get DOT permission.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for Josh on the, on this agreement? If not, I'd entertain a motion for approval.
Move to approve the agreement as presented.
Thank you. Mr. Stone.
Ryan Stone, aye.
Archibald Tuller, aye.
Tim Marans, aye.
Doug Hay, aye.
Pam King, aye.
Thank you very much. And now we have the Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Safer Grant.
So this is a, a grant for the fire department. This is a, a grant process, if I'm not mistaken, that typically takes place every year. There may, there may be some years skipped now and again, but this is through the federal government. A very competitive grant process all over the country. We are requesting, staff is requesting the approval for, for us to submit this grant. This would be for six firemen. And you may be asking, why six? You know, the fire department's a little bit different in that if you add, you've got three shifts, three 24-hour shifts. So if you only add one employee, you essentially have two shifts that, that don't get that extra employee. So one employee is essentially three employees for the fire department to cover all four, all three shifts, excuse me. This grant would be a 75% first year paid for by the government, 35% the second and third year paid for by the government. The, the total cost of that, and this does include benefits, which we have to include, the town-funded proportion of this would be for the first year, $94,057. The second year would be $255,574. The third year would be $266,588. And then the fourth year would be all town-funded. And of course, right now, we projected that to be $422,440. So $400,022, $440,000. We have applied this in the past, I think a couple of times over, over the years, and we have not been successful in the past. At this point, I don't know that we'll be successful this time. As I mentioned, it's very competitive, but we are here to ask for your blessing to submit for this grant. And we won't know anything probably until around October or November of this year.
Is there a deadline for this?
The deadline for this to be submitted is this Friday, on March the 12th.
Okay. Any questions? Does the board have any questions for Josh on that?
Josh, if we go ahead and approve, applying for the grant tonight, that, does that in any way commit us to accepting the grant? Should we be awarded?
It does not commit you to accepting the grant if you're awarded. If, I will say this, from, from a staff level, if we're going to submit the grant, I would hope that you, that the board would be in favor of us spending that money.
Right. Well, I would, I have to express my concern about accepting it just because we're, it's, it's $400,000. And so, and I see the chief out in the hall there. But what I think is necessary before we're able to make a commitment of, of that magnitude is that you, we, we have approximately, and the chief may know this off the top of his head or Josh, but, you know, a sizable portion of our budget, our, our budget, because we're a fire district, is paid for by the county. You know, we're not, we, we don't fund all of it. The county funds a significant piece of it. And, and I don't think we can make this commitment without communicating to the county manager and without getting some, you know, we have ever how many fire districts in the county. And, and we're, and I think we have to coordinate with the county. We, we can't carry this on our shoulders completely. I don't think the, the town share of it. So that's, that would be my reservation. So that's, that would be my reservation about accepting it, it's just, it's simply the magnitude of, it's too much on our budget. That's four cents, five cents, four or five cents of tax revenue. And so I just, I don't, I don't think we can make that, I don't think that would be prudent to make that decision and commitment to, because that's what we're committing for. Now, if you have to raise taxes to do the proper services, that's what you have to do, but I can't, I can't be supportive of it without communicating from the county, without knowing what they're willing to do on their end, and they should be willing to do something, but they, of course, have to coordinate with all the other fire districts. And so that's my, that's my feeling, and I, you know, I would encourage the Board to, that we will not, might need to not, not, not deny or not apply for the grant, I think is the appropriate thing. So I don't know if that even takes an action by the Board, Mr. Sneed, but, you know, what would be the best thing to do, but...
One more question.
Sure.
Would it be okay to let them apply for it, and then that would give us time till October or November, I believe, to see what the other fire districts and so on would be willing to participate in, to really find out what our liability would be on the long term?
Well, the other fire districts won't, this all comes from the county. I mean, we do have a, we do have a buy-in on it, we do have a responsibility, I think, on our budget for a new position, but the county does as well. I mean, they just, they have, they have some, they have some buy-in too. And so it's not the other fire districts, it's the county government, they're going to have to, but I think that they would be considering the other fire, they're not going to just consider us.
I see, I see.
As a matter of fact, I don't know if they even resolved what the fire district tax is going to be.
We don't have that information yet, I'm hopeful that we'll get it by Monday.
So we just have too many unknowns, in my opinion, to...
There are unknowns, and I'm cheering and concerned about that.
Yeah, so...
I was just thinking if we could buy some time until we've been through our budget process.
Well, it's due Friday, is the problem.
That's what I'm saying, let them apply, but...
Well, Josh was saying he'd rather not do that.
Okay.
We can apply, but, you know, I think from a staffing level, if we're going to apply, we're going to be hopeful that we're going to be able to do it.
Yeah, we're kind of making a commitment.
Right.
Chief, would you like to say anything?
The biggest thing is, as we presented last week, our staffing level is applicable, and we still respond every day. And firemen are nature that if you give us a task, we're going to figure out something. But responding every day, minimum staffing creates challenges to be able to meet that service level demand. So the biggest quest we can make is, are we meeting the service level demands of all the citizens of the expectation of council?
Right.
We responded today to a work house fire, at 6:00 on duty, we had assistance from Swanon Ola High School, runways and license, responding to some house fire.
Right.
The house was lighted by at the time of the call coming in. Fortunately, the occupants were able to get out, so I mean, we don't know what place everybody had to come work.
Right.
But that staff can be six good, we'd be able to provide us a delivery of service.
Right, well, I can, I certainly can appreciate that, and we appreciate your work and the sacrifice that your firefighters take, but our responsibility for, you know, five cents of tax revenue that we don't have right now, would really need to be new monies, and we don't, you know, it's just, I don't think we can make that decision, certainly not tonight, with the unknowns that we would have from the county, but I do think the county, actually, what I would, if we resolve this, Josh, I'd like for you to draft a letter for, to county manager and lay out the concerns, I'm sure we're not the only fire district that has a similar concern, and, you know, and just explain our staffing shortage.
True.
And then, as we move forward, the whole issue, Chief, to me, is that if this needs to be done, it needs to be done, and doing this, these grant monies, we don't have enough information now to make that decision, and so I don't, I just don't see how we can move forward with the grant monies, and we can't really make, we're making a decision about probably needing to raise taxes five cents, you know, four years from now, and a little bit along the way, and I don't think the Board has enough information and is able to make that decision tonight, for a decision that has to be made by Friday.
You know, and I think for the Board, you know, I think it's important that you look at everything as well, as a whole.
Yeah, right, that's right.
So, you know, as we move through this budget, you know, we're going to talk about it to some extent Wednesday, and we're not going to, we're not going to get real down and dirty, but we'll talk about it some, and I think, you know, five years from now, or four years from now, when this will be due, you need to think about everything else. And I'm not saying this for any reason, but you just need to be holistic and looking at every other department and what the needs are for the town.
That's right. So, Board, it's your, do you need to take action on this one way or the other?
If we decide we, you know, we do want to move forward with additional firemen, when would be the time to do that, during this budget process, or?
That's correct.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Mayor, with all that being discussed and not having enough information tonight and approaching deadline, I would agree, and I would make a motion to deny applying for this safer grant at this time.
Thank you, thank you. Go right ahead and start the roll call.
Ryan Stone, aye.
Archibald Tiller, aye.
Tim Raines, aye.
Doug Hay, aye.
Pam King, aye.
All right, thank you, thank you for being here, Chief. So, Josh, we have the ordinance to change the name of the governing body from Board of Alderman to Town Council.
You're on the governing, all right, Ron and I are discussing who's going to take this turn. So this is an ordinance to change the name of the governing body from Board of Alderman to Town Council. If I'm remembering correctly, you know, as we talked about in our consent agenda, this is going to be submitted, and it's going to be a public hearing for the entire charter. However, there was some discussion about having, changing the actual name first to go along with that, so that's, that is what this ordinance is for.
This is just an ordinance to change the name of the governing body from Board of Alderman to Town Council.
Very good.
Now, keep in mind, it'll take a small lifetime to make all the changes in our co-ordinances, but a good part of that will occur when you do the part in a couple of months, form with 160D, and over time, all those changes will get made.
Probably a good time to do it from that perspective.
It's a start.
Any questions for the town attorney or manager on this ordinance? If not, I'd entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 0-21-02 as presented, to change the name of this body from Board of Alderman to Town Council.
All right, thank you. We'll call Mr. Stone.
Ryan Stone, aye.
Archibald Tiller, aye.
Tim Raines, aye.
Doug Hay, aye.
Pam King, aye.
Very good, thank you. Council, council persons?
Council members.
Council members. All right, Josh?
All right, your last item on new business, this is a North Carolina Division of Environmental Quality, Division of Air Quality, this is a Volkswagen settlement level rebate. In the past, we wrote a grant that we're still waiting to get the money on for some, a couple dump trucks within our Public Services Department. We did get funded for two dump trucks, that's about $180,000 that we're hopeful we can spend very, very soon. I stay on Savannah quite a bit to keep those guys on task. But this one specifically is for electronic vehicle charging stations. We submitted this grant, Savannah submitted this grant, this is for two stations with two ports on each. One would be for the Lakeview Center, or Center for Active Aging, and one would be for the Black Mountain Library. The total project cost is approximately $30,000, and we would be responsible for paying for 10 of that, 10,000 of that, excuse me.
Very good, any questions for Josh on that?
Josh, I would just say, I was delighted to hear that you all jumped on that opportunity really quickly and made that happen, because I've been reading so much about major car manufacturers that are going to be switching to electric vehicles entirely in the next 10 years or so, so I think it was really smart to jump on that, and also, we're just really into saving the environment around here, but I need to express my ignorance and ask you one thing. So when somebody charges their car on one of these, is there a fee associated with it?
Currently, there is not.
I mean, they don't have to pay for the electricity?
They don't have to pay for it. We pay, the town pays for it.
Uh-huh, gotcha, okay, I just wondered how that part works.
And I would say we'd probably do a similar format, that's what we do now with the current ones we have over here, it's just something the town pays for, and it's not, it's really not that expensive.
Okay, I was just wondering how that worked, I don't have an electric car.
Thank you, Savannah, for your work on this. I'd entertain a motion, Boards, for approval.
So moved.
Thank you. Mr. Stone?
Ryan Stone, aye.
Archibald Tiller, aye.
Tim Raines, aye.
Doug Hay, aye.
Pam King, aye.
Thank you. We have a public hearing, and I'd like to have a motion to open the public hearing. We're going to hear the information first.
My preference is, she gives you information, but it's not just a statement you're getting into, you're actually gathering the information that the public's going to hear, you're going to make your decision on. So my preference would be over the public hearing and then let Jessica present.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to open the public hearing.
Thank you, we'll call.
Ryan Stone, aye.
Archibald Tiller, aye.
Tim Raines, aye.
Doug Hay, aye.
Pam King, aye.
Thank you. Jessica?
Good evening, well, by everything else on your agenda, this is very simple. We have a few updated definitions to look at tonight. Attorney Sneed asked us to create some new definitions that would add some clarity to our ordinance when we are reviewing uses, particularly some occasionally splitting hairs between what is commercial versus what is residential versus who is a resident and what is a resident. So we have a few definitions, and I want to read to you, and these align with the North Carolina general statutes and generally accepted definitions in planning community. So we have residence, a structure or part of a structure containing dwelling units or rooming units, including single-family or two-family houses, multiple dwellings, boarding or rooming houses or apartments. Residences do not include such transient accommodations, such as transient hotels, motels, tourist cabins, dormitories, or recreational vehicles. Okay? Next up is resident. An individual whose principal place of living and sleeping is in a particular location is a resident of that location. Short-term rental, any dwelling or portion thereof that is available for use or is used for accommodations or lodging of guests paying a fee or other compensation for a period of at least, no less, sorry, a period of less than 30 consecutive days. In transient occupancy of a dwelling unit or sleeping unit for not more than 30 days.
Right.
And that's all.
Thank you, thank you. So any questions for Jessica? And is there any member?
No comments.
We have any, no comments? Any questions for Jessica? So not them, I'd entertain a motion that we close the public hearing.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'd move to close the public hearing.
All right, ahead with the roll call.
Ryan Stone, aye.
Archibald Tiller, aye.
Tim Raines, aye.
Doug Hay, aye.
Pam King, aye.
Thank you, so you have this ordinance, this ordinance in front of you, these definitions, and the ordinance is 0-21-01, and I'd entertain a motion for approval if there are no more questions or any questions or comments for Jessica.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to adopt ordinance 0-21-01 as presented.
Thank you very much, once you just start the roll call.
Ryan Stone, aye.
Archibald Tiller, aye.
Tim Raines, aye.
Doug Hay, aye.
Pam King, aye.
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you, Jessica, I appreciate you being here, and communication from town manager or town attorney, town manager?
I don't have anything, Mr. Mayor.
Great.
I have one short, just sort of an update on your charter going forward with the legislature. When Anna came in and gave a report, she thought the time for getting it to the legislature was later than actually, isn't a couple, I may be aware of this. However, this, the ordinance as, or the charter as drafted has been sent to John Egger's office and to Senator Over's office to proceed, and so we're just sort of going side by side. By the time it reaches the point where they're ready to print their final bill, we will have, you will have your public hearing to decide the form that you want your charter to be, but it is going on right now. The process in the legislature won't start after your public hearing, but it is in process.
Thank you, Ron. Anything else? Anything from the Board? And as far as I'm concerned, just a reminder that we'll, I'll look forward to seeing everybody Wednesday morning at 8:30 for the, our budget workshop. And I just did have one thing to add, back on our public comment time at the beginning, if any of that, you know, report, if we're in need of attending to the assets that we have at the lake, I think that's probably something we're all interested in, you know, trying to pay attention to. It's highly used, and highly used means highly worn out very often, and so if we can do that, that'd be great, just to kind of take inventory and see, and maybe that's a good thing in the budget time. Most of those things may not be that costly, but I know we just spent a lot of money there too on something that I think will address some of those issues, and actually, the bigger one and the more costly one, I think we have with the, not with the grant, the work that you did with grading, so that you can get a piece of equipment in there and keep that, keep that...
Dredged out there.
Dredged out at the entry level there, but nonetheless, it's, I think we all, we all probably share that, share that concern. If there's nothing else, I'd entertain a motion that we adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we adjourn.
Very good, Mr. Stone?
Ryan Stone, aye.
Archibald Tiller, aye.
Tim Raines, aye.
Doug Hay, aye.
Pam King, aye.
Thank you, appreciate it.